Angela, did you hear anything from Rory in regards to the chief's meeting?
No.
Okay, I sent them the things, so I don't know.
I haven't heard from the last meeting we had.
Yeah, I sent them the link for the, because it was recorded.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard back from, I don't know if you heard anything.
Where do they post it, or do they not?
Uh, it just got sent to him and I imagine it goes to the town website.
All right, no, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, if he reaches out to you, just shoot me an email or a text or something, but I think he went directly to his email, so.
Will do.
Clay, if you want to just give it another minute or two, I still have people entering the room.
Got it.
Clay, I'm good if you want to start, as more people enter the room, I'll just put them right on the screen as I get the notification.
All right, uh, call a meeting to order, stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Let's do that.
Flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic. Where we stand. One nation. Under God. In the visual. Liberty. Uh, chief's report. Mike.
Okay. Um, kind of old business, but I've been back and forth with ESO in regards to that invoice that we talked about last month. Uh, very difficult to get a hold of an actual human being. I'm working with one of their, I guess supervisors or managers to get, try to get that invoice resolved. From what they're saying that, I think it was fourteen hundred. So it was the, uh, we had paid four thousand seventy-nine fifteen, that was for the renewal. That was for the renewal, uh, and then we also got that additional invoice for fourteen hundred dollars and change, uh, so that's the one I'm trying to resolve. I asked them if that was from emergency reporting or ESO, and basically, the person I was talking to said, it doesn't matter yet, so it's all the same thing. Um, I did tell her that, you know, we had signed a contract and the contract was very specific as far as the date that that emergency reporting was supposed to be up and running, uh, and it didn't happen. Uh, she did say there were several notes in the system in regards to it, so, uh, that's still kind of pending. Um, as soon as I hear anything about that, I'll email it out to everybody. Uh, as far as FEMA, I'm working through to get us our username and password, so we can turn in our info reports. I know I gave you guys last month and told you that, uh, that was no longer going to be done by the state, it was done by FEMA, uh, so I'm still working on that. Uh, training, I think you guys saw, I sent the Valley Fire School, um, our list of our mandates that we're doing for COVID in regards to the firefighter one class, it's being held up there. You know, just basically, everybody's got to follow the same rules that all of our members need to follow, everybody needs to wear a mask. You know, the room has to be wiped down and cleaned and, uh, we've given them access to obviously the spray gun to spray that room down as well.
No problems, what, no problem with what you're asking?
Uh, they've already had four classes, uh, the first three, uh, were done via by Zoom because, um, forty percent of the class has already come down with COVID. Uh, they did have their first practical, uh, obviously at Great Hills this Saturday, uh, no issues as far as I know.
But they don't, they didn't have any problem with everything that you listed out that you wanted done?
No, um, you know, because in prior conversations with Director Vincent, I just kind of said, you know, if you can't follow these conditions, then you may have to look somewhere else, and he said all the conditions we followed, so.
Cool.
Um, gonna look into doing a, uh, two, two class in a pump operator class, probably April. Um, I got a phone call last Wednesday, uh, from Rory in regards to the five-year plan and strategic planning, uh, they usually have that big conference at TUI. Um, obviously this year was going to be done by Zoom, um, I asked them, he called me Wednesday, three forty-five. I asked them when ours was, and he told me tomorrow at eight AM. Uh, so I told him that you'd either have to reschedule that, or we would have to submit our five-year plan later than that, that we couldn't do within, you know, a twenty-four hour period. He agreed, and it was, you know, an email mistake, so, um, he has not gotten back to me if we're going to reschedule it, or we're just going to submit that with our regular budget. Um, we probably will be having some work sessions in regards to the budget coming up, uh, I gotta look at everybody's dates. Uh, I started working on the budget, but as far as the five-year capital plan, that's a little more stretched out. Um, letters for firefighters, I'm making thirty calls, went out this week. Um, we went from thirty-two, which was the month before, uh, to sixteen firefighters that received letters. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Uh.
Go ahead, man.
No, I'm good, I said.
Okay.
Mike, did you have a question?
No, I'm good, it's just, that's all, just a comment, I saw you in your minutes that you're doing the, uh, Super Sunday idea again?
Uh, yes, we're gonna try to get that done in March, uh, I can't think of the date off the top of my head, but obviously that's gonna be, we're gonna have to see what the COVID numbers are at that point as well.
Clay?
Yes.
We'll need a motion to add the chief's minutes to the agenda, it didn't make it, um.
Okay, we'll do that. Uh, we need a motion to add the chief's minutes to our agenda for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, chair votes, aye. Uh, chief's minutes. Has anybody read them? Any questions for the chief?
Uh, one, one question, this is Mike, the, um, it said your requisitions were attached, I didn't see any attachment in the email. For the month's requisitions.
I didn't get them either.
I'll forward them right now.
Okay.
I thank you. Uh, one last thing on the chiefs, I'm sorry, the, um, Victoria called me again, they're still, she's still looking for W nines. I don't know what else we can do, just.
So, uh, just in regards to the W nines, um, I did get some phone calls from members, I did try to explain it to them the best I could. Uh, the other thing, and I did ask Town Hall, uh, was they closed uh, earlier than the twenty-ninth, so they were, Town Hall was closed from that whole week. Uh, so I did ask, what about the members that needed to get to W nines and by the twenty-ninth? And I did not get an answer, um, but I said they need to extend that at least a week because Town Hall was closed for a week. So.
Do, do we know how many members need to get this done?
I, I, I don't have that number.
He sent me an email on the third, I can, I'm just afraid he's scared to send any emails anymore with the names on it. I could send them to you, Mike, with that, do you want her list? Or I can have her send it to you?
Uh. Uh. I wouldn't send it to me.
We'll be, we'll be in touch and we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the chief's report?
Aye. Aye.
Pat, you there?
Yes, and I.
All right, motion passes, commissioners' meeting minutes, need a motion to, and a second to accept the commissioners' meeting from last month.
Big motion. Second. Third.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Correspondence, Angela.
I have none.
Moving on, financial report.
All right, okay, uh, I emailed the budget out to everyone, I hope they got it, if you didn't, I could send it again. We're pretty much unchanged, most of the numbers, just the maintenance, so we took a little bit of a heavy maintenance hit in in this last month, uh, still unclear how much exactly, seventeen was out for at least a week with all the sensors and things. Uh, I had made a PO for that, but I, I don't think it's going to cover it. And also, Engine Eleven is getting its power steering pump rebuilt, and I don't have a firm number on that yet, but, uh, those are the two, uh, maintenance things, but overall, the maintenance budget, even with, uh, those two items, we're still what, what I consider on track, only because I took the budget divided by twelve, so month to month, we're still up in pretty decent shape, we're fifty-seven percent, and we're half a year, so. But we might just make it okay, depending, obviously, if nothing else goes goes crazy, um, other budget items, like, I still have a couple of, uh, POs outstanding, a couple of bigger ones, one was for the replacement hose, Mike, from, from, uh, I guess we had, what was the value I have on that is?
Mike, we haven't received.
Eight thousand dollars worth of hose, fire matic for hose?
Yeah, we haven't received the hose, that's probably why you haven't been invoiced.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just, I go back and I look for open POs, they're just sitting there to see what's going on, and then the other one was five thousand for helmets, so I suppose we're waiting for those two, I guess.
Yeah, I think the only thing that came in this, or last week was, uh, the gloves, but I don't know if you have a rough top of my head.
And so that, that's about it on the budget side, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for the financial? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting financial report, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes, I motion passes, motion to accept the fire marshal's report.
Motion. Say.
That's, okay, motion, that's going to be just to put it on file, being that he is not here.
Yes.
All right, all in favor of putting the fire marshal's report on file, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Building maintenance, uh, anybody have anything other than what I have?
No.
Actually, it's good news. It seems with the replacement of some pipes downstairs, it seems to be functioning fine. There haven't been any leaks, the boiler hasn't overfilled. It seems to be running fine, they want to leave that wall open until the first week of February and make sure everything is working fine, and then we'll take and work on putting that wall back together. Um, there's a couple of zones that I found that are not working, and I've talked to Alex about that, he was meeting with Johnson Controls, whoever it is. Um, I have, do not have an outcome on that, but I mean, the firehouse seems to be warm, so. It's good news. That's all I've got. Oh, the garage doors were done at Citizens and Great Hill. And we had a purchase order for that, so that should be all taken care of, I haven't heard anybody say there's anything wrong. Uh, anything else? Unfinished business. Do we have any?
Yeah, I got, um, I thought, I guess I should say, I thought we were going to still discuss about sending out the letter. I would consider that unfinished business.
Okay.
Because I talked about, let's meet with the people before we send them a letter, because the concern was getting back the gear, right? So we can distribute new gear. And for the most part, if you ask me, if the people you send a letter to that don't give a shit, they're not going to give the, get it back, let you go rip it from them. Now, I think we should have, at least, did we talk with the captains to see if, you know, lay out the plan for them?
We get this, uh, motion and, uh, to add it to the agenda?
Certainly. Uh, we need a motion to add discussion about the thirty call letters that went out, we need to have a motion and a second to add that to our agenda.
I do. Let's say, first or second.
Do we have a second?
Second. I'll second it, second.
Discussion.
All right, well, like I said, do we meet with the captains, discuss like the plan?
So we've been talking about this letter since October. Uh, since that time, we've had one new captain at Citizens, I did have a discussion with him, and I did have a discussion via my phone with, uh, Captain Perkasevich for the chief's meeting.
And did you lay out your plan as to, like, meet with them?
I'm not going to meet with every individual person, no.
No, no, well, the captains will have to, but did you, uh, lay that out with the, they'll have to meet with everyone? And before we could have sent out, like, they could have just reached out to them, I mean, like, Great Hill only has five people, or the captain could have.
Actually, Great Hill only has four people.
Okay, four, I'm just saying, we could have reached out.
At twelve.
All right.
So, you know, we had to wait for the numbers to come in, uh, prior to December, we were at thirty-two members, and now we're down to sixteen. Uh, there was actually five letters that were sent out to Great Hill, uh, one of the members, um, was on some type of leave, which was not. Uh one of the members um was on some type of leave, which was not conveyed to the chiefs, so he was told that he could disregard his letters.
Well, that's the kind of stuff I was talking about, at least like meet. And reach out to the people before we send them a letter requesting their gear back, I guess.
Okay, so the letter states that they have to talk to their captain and president. And either change their status or come up with some sort of plan.
Guys, if I can uh jump in for a second, it's uh it's Han and um. I haven't uh I haven't spoken with Gary about what they're gonna do on the uh on the Great Hill side. Um but I have spoken so far with um. I think five or six of the twelve. Um I think there's probably gonna be uh. A couple of different scenarios, some that are that are gonna change status and. Uh and stay associated, and there's gonna be some that uh that are gonna see the. The plan that I think I'm putting together, I think will work, um and we'll uh we'll start working towards reinstatement, but I I don't think uh. I think at least initially at Citizens, I I've got a few more, I think I got uh twelve, I think they guys just said that Captain Parkasevich has four. Um I'd like to uh to wade into this a little bit Wednesday night, I think I've got meetings with four or five people Wednesday night. And uh, you know, and I can report back to the chiefs as to how well it's going and uh and what the plan is, right? I think because there's a a separation between the department level and the company level, I think it's on the captains at least to um. Take this next step in the in the program and try and come up with what's uh suitable for the company level, and then try and work that back up towards the chiefs.
Well, we should have had a plan on how we bring the people or how we're gonna take them out or and bring them back or allow them to come back.
This.
But, so Mike or Pat, let me ask you this. Some of the people that received these letters haven't made thirty calls in four years.
We still gotta.
I'm not sure why we're giving them a chance to come back.
But do they have gear?
What's that?
Would they have gear?
Yeah, they have gear.
Yeah, it's my, been my experience, the people you never hear from. You'll never get it back from, unless you got uh the cops to go out for, but we have other people who just have other things going on and. Um and very productive in our firehouse.
We, okay, and I agree, but then. I agree, but then they need to contact either their chiefs or their company officers and tell them that. Uh for instance, one of the gentlemen from Great Hill that got a letter, you know, I didn't know that that was going on until. Uh Captain Parkasevich had told me about it, and when he told me about it, I said, well, then you can disregard the letter.
Well, then.
But if, you know, I have a hundred, I have a hundred firefighters, if I don't, if I'm not told by my company officers or other chiefs. That they're on leave or they're on family leave or medical leave, you know. How how do I know that?
Well, I mean, did you have uh a pool of people you were thinking about to begin with?
Uh no, there was no pool, if if you made less than thirty calls, everybody got a letter.
Yeah, I know, but.
There was people in the department that had been in the department forty years that I sent letters to, I mean, anybody. Who was not currently on a leave or medical leave that made less than thirty calls got a letter, straight down the port.
Right, well, we could have made it simpler if you, if we just meet, have meet with the captains, have them meet with the people who. Need the calls, see if they're even gonna be able to do it, see if they're a medical, you know, we could have like avoid. You know, sending out letters to, you know, productive people, like, we don't have a.
Made thirty calls.
I'm just saying, we don't have a unified plan to bring it back yet.
The policy states that they need to make thirty calls.
I got that. But let's say, we go to someone.
You're telling me not to follow the policy?
Well, I'm saying, how are we gonna bring him back if we don't have a a unified policy to bring him back?
They're gonna talk to their captains and come up with a plan, and then they're gonna come back to us.
And if that plan wouldn't be acceptable, that would be coming to the commissioner.
Gary or Pat, in the past, though, when we've done this, and then, you know, you put people on probation, say, we have sixty days to make thirty calls. They make their thirty calls, and then you don't see them for a year. Or we end up with the same people that don't make thirty calls at all to follow you. I mean, so if you don't want us to follow that policy, then tell us and we won't follow it.
No, what I'm saying is, we have a few things, first, we should. Meet with them, talk to them, and then we also need to come up with a policy. If they wanna do it, you wanna put them on probation or whatever. To bring them back, right now, we don't have a policy to bring them back.
Correct, cause part part of the deal about being an interior firefighter, an active firefighter in the Seymour Fire Department, and it's stressed in Admin Three is that you make thirty calls.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't like, I didn't dream this up, like, this is.
I got that, but we still need to be able to have a a cohesive way of bringing them back, like, that is work is in both firehouses that they both follow.
And I'm, and what I'm saying is, we've done this before, and they make their thirty calls, and then a year later, we're back in the same predicament.
So we should not bring anyone back?
I I couldn't hear it.
I'm just saying, we shouldn't bring anyone back, is what you're saying?
I'm saying they didn't make thirty calls, we went directly down the list of the entire department, and we sent letters to people that didn't make thirty calls. We didn't batch letters together, if they didn't make thirty calls, we sent everybody a letter.
Commissioner Jergens, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um so I received a letter today, and my letter states. Um basically to come to this meeting to dispute it. So, I'm not sure when.
Your letter, your letter also states that you have to take and go through your captain.
And talk to your captain. No, 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 my letter, i- if you'd like me to read it to you. States, I've been removed from active duty from the Seymour Fire Department, please meet with your company officers to return all your gear. And uh discuss your change in company status, it does not say that I am to. Talk to them and try to come back, it just says to return my gear. Um so, and also says, if I have any questions, I am to come to this meeting and to discuss it, so. My my question is, it it's, you know. I conveyed to my captain, um I believe Captain Levy. And then Parkasevich. Both times that I would be on leave for extended periods due to childcare issues and COVID. There's no company, there's no department policy that says this is the paperwork to fill out for FMLA. None of that exists, my brother's in the same boat, I could tell you that. Both of us have not had childcare, um and we're both working full time. I have no option, so. Hold on, hold on a second, Mike. Um the one thing that's gonna come off my plate for a little bit is the Seymour Fire Department, and. What I can do and what I have done is attend drills when I can and provide whatever I can training wise. Um because that's planned, and my wife's not working at seven thirty at night, so I'm able to do that a little bit. Um. That being said, I've never been contacted by anybody to say, hey, what's the status going forward? Talking to Captain Parkasevich, um he was only made aware that this was gonna happen after the letter was already sent. So there was no discussion about it. Um and then, not for nothing, I've dedicated thousands of hours to the town of Seymour, I'm not one of these people that. Like me or not, that didn't do anything, and has never been around. Thousands of hours, years as a company officer, years as an assistant chief, to just receive a letter out of the blue without even a phone call. Is just, it's it's embarrassing. And it's frustrating, because. You know, I will be able to come back, and I will be able to dedicate time, and I would like my kids to be members of the Seymour Fire Department. I've been a member for twenty years. And to be treated this way, it's it's a little bit frustrating, a a little bit of respect of a phone call would have been nice. You know, and not for nothing, reading this letter says that I've been removed from active status, right? In accordance with SOP three, um but if you read. Administrative, you know, the SOP three, ADM three. Uh it's only states suspension of active duty. So a suspension of active duty is not a removal from the Seymour Fire Department, it's a suspension of active duty. Give me a timeframe of that suspension, give me a plan to return to active duty, I've received it either. And I am reading. The guideline in front of me. So, if you're going to follow a policy.
Hang on, Mike. So, you're Doug, you're telling me that in the past year. That you have attended meetings at Great Hill and drills at Great Hill. You've talked to company officers, and you have not received any of the correspondence verbally that. Members that Citizens Company, Citizens Engine Company have received. Multiple times about making thirty calls this entire year. You have not received, you let me finish. You have not received, you have not received any. Kind of communication from anyone at Great Hill Hose Company. In the past twelve months that said that you would have to make twelve, uh thirty calls for the year.
No, the last communication I have is from Chief Lombardi in twenty twenty that says call numbers do not really matter right now during COVID. That's the last official anything that I have from the town of Seymour or Seymour Fire Department. As far as from the company officers, they were aware that I was out extended with my kids, as was my brother, and. Being aware of another citizens' member who was also not. Informed of any of this, it's not just a Great Hill citizens' thing, it, you know, I I. I I have friends and citizens too that have the same issue, so. It it's not just. I don't think I'm being discriminated against, I I feel like it's just. Poor policy at a poor time, and the the. Not talking to the company officers to know that, hey, like, you got a couple guys that are dealing with childcare issues that have longstanding members of this department. Cut them some slack, but if we're not willing to do that.
I don't know. Doug, I think that, I think that all of us are very empathetic for everybody across the board, and I I was, sorry, I'm just jumping into this now, guys, I was off another meeting, however. Everybody has been made made aware of this, and uh I think in a leadership role, Doug, you were well aware of the thirty call policy as well as being a captain, a chief, stuff like that. However, we had made this very clear to all of the officers for several months. We communicated again on the, communicated on the company floors, I know I stood up and spoke up many a times, Dave has stood up and spoke up many a times. I don't, I'm pretty sure down at Citizens, the uh chiefs have done that as well, trying to give everybody a heads up, and I apologize for slurring, I have a uh. Missing tooth that I had in emergency surgery today. Um. But at the same time, they need, your officers need to communicate that to you, your officers are the ones that are the ones that are gonna put you on a probationary period if you. Feel that you can still be active and be a part of the Seymour Fire Department. That's where we had left it up to the officers right now currently in order to work that out with you guys, we don't know those, that information, whether. You were had family issues and stuff, the conversations that you had had with your officers. If they don't relay that information to us, then we do not know.
When I relayed this information directly to you.
To what's that?
I relayed that information directly to you in twenty twenty with Ryan, and then in twenty twenty one with my daughter.
In twenty twenty, yes, I remember that, but in twenty twenty one, I don't remember that conversation. Definitely in twenty twenty for sure.
Right, Mike.
I don't know what else to do.
Mike.
Doug, can I try to answer some of your questions that you had brought up? Um so, we did start talking about this in October. Um I know Gary had been in and out with some of the meetings, you know, I don't know if the other officers have talked to him about it or not, I'm sure they did. Um when I talked to Gary, uh he told me that he did not have any letters or knew of any information of any firefighters are on leave. Um so I don't know if you had those conversations with him, but it did not get back to the chiefs.
Um, okay, I I, you know, I I completely get that, Mike, and that's fine, and if if there was some sort of mishap or whatever. Again, I've heard nothing, I was a member of your board, I worked with you for a very long time, Quinn. I work with you regularly. Somebody.
I think Quinn made that up.
Me and ounce of respect to say, hey. Is there a reason you're not making these calls? Somebody. I feel if nothing else, I'm owed that. That's.
Your your company officer should have reached out to you. I mean, they see the same numbers that the chiefs see.
Uh can I jump in here, please? Um this is, this is Gary, Parker Savage, um. So I had sent the email to all the chiefs right after I found out Mike sent an email about what his plan was. Um I think the commissioners were on it also. And I I I think I. Explained my concern, and then Mike had called me. And I explained my concern again. Um we talked about it, some of some things were cleared up. But I had wished, and I said this to him, that a conversation could have happened with me. First, and I could have outlined information, but at that point. Uh Mike said the letters were sent out. So I didn't get into a lot of the stuff, cause at that point, now it was back to how are we gonna get, what's the plan to get people back in service? So I'd have to meet with them. Um there was no December chief's meeting, that's when we usually actually talk about a lot of this stuff. Um there was correspondence about the thirty calls. Um and I know it got brought up on the floor during some meetings and drills. Um unfortunately, I I don't have the attendance records of those meeting and drill, so I'm not sure um who was there at that time. But I feel like. I know, since Doug's here, I I look back in emails, even when Quinn was captain, I was just lieutenant, first lieutenant. He has emails about being out on medical leave even in nineteen. Um and twenty was a wash, and twenty one, he had spoke to me about childcare. Uh so. What it, and I talked to Mike.
Which I will, which I will, which I will agree with.
Yeah.
About nineteen and twenty, Gary.
Right, no, so like, when Mike had gone back to three years, you know, I, you know, because we were just talking, you know, about a history of. Um not making thirty calls, you know, if you have, if you're on medical. You know, two out of three years, and one of the years was twenty twenty, where it's basically. You know, we didn't really really hold many people accountable. Uh and now we're in the height of COVID again. I I wish we would have had that conversation, because I could have actually planned, researched. Provided the chief with all the documentation I had, even if it was, you know, between me and Quinn. Um from nineteen, and I and I think we could have maybe avoided some letters, I do agree, letters needed to go out. Um and I do believe that there should be some sort of plan. Compliance. Uh my feeling as the captain is, I really don't wanna lose people. Um yes, we have policies, you know. In my profession, I'm a chief probation officer, I got policies up the yin yang. That I constantly enforce, but when you enforce them, it's always sanctions, we try not to, you know. Nobody's getting hung out to dry without knowing and meeting several times ahead of time. So.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I do have two questions for you.
Sure.
Okay, we had this conversation last week, correct?
Correct.
And we talked about the members that were on your list, correct?
Correct.
Did you tell me that Doug Zanuski was on a leave?
No, I didn't have that information, I would, we were talking, cause once you said to me, letters were sent out. Our switch in conversation went to, what do we do now? And that's when it went to like, you know what I mean, we went to like, what's the plan for it?
There was another member on your list, we'll keep that name nameless, and you had brought something to my attention, and I said, what?
Then ignore it.
Correct, so if you had told me that Doug was on a leave. He probably wouldn't be at this meeting as aggravated as he is.
Well, no, it wouldn't have mattered, because it was still sent out, I would have still had the same, like, even the person we're talking about, they got a letter, I didn't talk to him yet. Right? So, what, when we talked, the letters were sent, they were supposed to be sent on Tuesday for your email to us. Right, that's why I responded, but I talked to you, uh maybe Monday, Sunday, I don't know, what, think Monday, I don't know. But it it was sent out that day, or you said they're already out, so at that point, my switch is, what's the resolution? How are we gonna get to, what's the plan look like, how are we gonna get, you know, what does it look like going forward, cause I really had no clue. You know, I wasn't sure, and that was something that we had talked about, we collaborated to try to come up with a plan, and I agree with meeting people. Right, I do, that's not, but I feel like, and I I literally just saw the letter today. And I wasn't sure, um. Cause I I didn't, I didn't even know what it read. You know, what what it said or anything, so I felt like I was a little bit in the dark. With that, you know, even, you know, I know we had talked about thirty calls, but there's so, I think that other policy talks about. A lot of things like fit testing and stuff like that, I mean, there were so many, what is, what's on there as far as that, the whatever that policy was at the bottom? There's like check marks and what you have to do for a year.
Right, so it's based on your interior, if you're an interior firefighter, if you're an exterior firefighter.
Okay.
My other question to you is, so, you know, Doug brings up an interesting point, he said that he made a bunch of training, is that, that's correct, right, Doug? So who who's in charge at Great Hill putting in training hours?
Um usually, uh one of the officers, one of the three of us, I think usually just.
Doug, can I read these numbers, are you okay with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm just going from the twenty twenty one list, right off Firehouse software, okay? Doug Zanuski, company meetings, five. Uh fire responses, incident responses, seven, training classes, zero.
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
Or, you know, Mike, they're all, they're all documented in my signature on them, so if you want.
I'm not doubting it, but what I, what I am doubting is that somebody didn't put them in.
Yeah, there was a time, I believe you guys were switching software, and I think they just stopped doing it for a while and then told. Yeah, there was a time, I believe you guys were switching software and I think they just stopped doing it for a while and then told to keep going with it or something. But either way, I, I don't intend to take up your meeting with this. If the answer to this is I can meet with my captain and come up with a plan. Then I'm fine with that. I will meet with my captain and come up with a plan. However, I was sent an e, a letter saying that. Per the policy, I will be removed from the active roles, which the policy doesn't even state. It just says suspended. So if I'm to be suspended from the active roles, that's fine. Give me a timeframe and then tell me what I can do. I'm not gonna walk away from twenty years of the Seymour Fire Department and I'm not gonna walk away from thousands of hours donated to the town of Seymour. Because of having childcare issues during a pandemic with two newborns. I, I, it, it just doesn't make any sense. So if you're telling me that you're gonna throw me out because of that. I'd say that's asinine. If you're telling me, hey, this is an issue, can you work with your captain? I'm okay with that. I will do that. You know, my, my family has donated. God knows how much time to the town of Seymour, Seymour Fire Department, including my. I believe ten years as a company officer, my twenty years in the Seymour Fire Department. Again, I'm not, not gonna throw that out because I had two kids. And, you know, I had an elbow surgery, I had COVID, I went through all this. I'm not gonna just have that taken away from me. So. Tell me what I need to do and I will do it.
Just for clarification, and I'm sure you already know this, the chiefs cannot throw you out of your respected company. All we're doing is taking you off the active list as an active firefighter. So say you said, hey, I want to change my status and go social or associate or veteran. Or whatever you'd be eligible for, you could do that. Or it's gonna be up to the captains to come up with some type of policy. Or some type of probation status or what, you know, whatever you want to call it in the meantime.
We should have that in place before we do it though. In other words, our captains now gotta meet, come up with a policy, so it's. Goes for both firehouses. We should have had.
Okay, so the captains, the captains can do that.
That's all I need to be here. Thank you.
Quinn, you're muted.
Quinn, you're muted.
Sorry. It's circumstantial too. I don't think that we can have just one select policy, like prime example, like in Doug's case, you know, he's got childcare issues. So we have to try to, you know, Gary has to come up with some sort of plan for Doug. Uh, to accommodate his schedule and what his availability would be. Uh, and that may be different from somebody else that's a citizen, you know what I mean? That has a. Uh, injury or something like that. They may not be able to do like an interior job, but they can go set up a ladder or something like that, you know? I think that, you know, that's why we're leaving this up to the officers and the captain. To make the decision to come up with a game plan for their individuals if they have circumstances like this. So that they can get themselves back on track and put a little boot in their butt and say, hey, listen. Obviously, the chiefs are, are, are being strong with this. What can we do to make you, uh, uh, still an active firefighter in Seymour Fire Department? I mean, I think that's, that's very fair. I'm just saying, we need a, a, you know, like a medical or something else beside that. I'm just saying. We need, whatever we're gonna do, we need a uniform between the firehouses to be able to bring someone back, like I discussed like the last time. Maybe we give them like a two month probation, can you make five calls, something like that? And if they can, then they're back. You know, you can't. You can't take their gear away and then say, you know, you gotta make calls, you know what I'm saying? Understandable, absolutely. And that's why I think it, that's why it's up to the, I think that maybe. With the captains have their conversations with the individuals. At the next chiefs meeting or if they want to have a side meeting with the chiefs to get our opinion on it or our agreement on it, then, then they pitch it to us, you know? I mean, we're giving, we're giving everybody an option to try to make this break.
You know, I guess, I guess I'm kind of confused. Because I, I constantly hear the commissioners say that they want our, our policies followed. When I follow the policies, we end up in this situation. You know, so. I don't know.
If, if, uh. A uniform.
If I could just chime in.
Go ahead.
The problem is you have a policy. That. Does one thing, but you have no policy or, or no recourse in that policy. For individuals to undo what is being done. You can't have that.
You were a commissioner when that policy was passed.
I was a commissioner. My first year as a commissioner, I asked you and your board. For a written policy for reinstatement of individuals. And you totally ignored it. Ignored it. I specifically asked for that when this same issue came up. And here we are again. So. Quite honestly, if this went to HR, you would lose. Everybody would be back. Because you don't have a policy in place.
Then you know what? Why don't the commissioners, instead of me getting screamed at, why don't the commissioners take a vote? And if you want this policy changed and get rid of this policy and put all these members back in service, then vote on it tonight and do it. Why even wait to go to the captains? Just make a vote, make a motion and the letters, we'll contact all the members that got the letters and we'll put them back in service.
But it's already been sent out. What we can do is.
You were the one that said we should talk to them. So why don't you make a motion? Somebody should make a motion. Somebody should make a motion. The commissioners can oversee that policy. Make it happen.
But what we can do is have the captains meet with each other, come up with a way, a recourse. So if the people actually want to come back, they can come back. They can meet with the chiefs and the commissioners about the plan and then we can implement that plan. The letters have already gone out. Someone, does that sound unreasonable? Anybody?
So here's, here's my two cents, guys. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that, I, I don't know Great Hill's bylaws. If, if what I've come up with, honestly, I didn't think this was gonna go to this point tonight. Um, and I didn't want to gum anything up with what the policy that I came up with was. I can, uh. I can go over it with Gary and if it aligns with what Great Hill's got, then we can both present that. Um, you know, like I said, I, I've got my meetings scheduled for Wednesday night. And I would like to at least try that out and see how it works. And, and my thought process on it is this. I, I don't think we need less people, but I will say this. I've been in for ten years and I also gave up my entire childhood to Seymour Fire Department. So. I understand the, I understand the desire to keep people in. I also understand that in that ten years. I had four kids that were in single digits and in that ten years, I've done sixteen hundred calls somehow. Now, my wife is with an airshot and she'd love to jump in here and tell you it's because of her and it probably is. And I'm not disparaging anybody. I'm just saying, somehow I found a way to get this done. So I would like to convey that to the people that are coming in as well. So that there is an understanding that yes, there is a policy and, and there is an end game to the policy adjustment that I've come up with. So it's not, and, and the, the chief is absolutely right. You say to people, hey, you gotta get your thirty calls and they say, okay. And you give them a, a period. And they get their thirty calls and sometimes they don't come back. I don't want that for a number of reasons. I, I don't want that because we need help. Uh, I know that at three o'clock in the morning, when I'm standing at Key Wright with a driver and a provey. I would love to have some of those people and I can promise you, that's happened way more than I can even remember. So I would like at least the opportunity. Um, on Wednesday night to go over this with, with some of the guys and I, I have had phone conversations with a few of them already and I think this is gonna work. And if, if my plan aligns with the bylaws of Great Hill and I, I can't imagine that it doesn't. And I think this works for everybody. And it does, it not only just shakes the tree, right? So if, if we, if we say. Yeah, okay, let's vote on this policy now and we're gonna, we're gonna undo it and, and shuffle the deck and see what we get. I don't think that's the best idea in the world. I, I agree with the chief that this, that policies are there for a reason and need to be upheld. But I think, I think what I've come up with, and believe me, I'm not trying to be a hero here, gang, okay? I just, I've thought a lot about this. I knew it was coming. In the five years I've been an officer. We have not, the, the, the three officers that I was in together with, four actually. Um, we did a terrible job of addressing by our company bylaws, addressing quarterly. Uh, with our members and I will fall on that sword. Uh, I, I've been on board for that for five years. I'm the captain now. That's, that's my bullet to take and I will take that proudly. Um, and, and it will be undone this year. But beyond that, there, there needs to be, there needs to be an end game so that this doesn't repeat year after year after year. Um, so if everybody's okay with this. I will present this to the four people that I have coming to see me on Wednesday night. And I will see how it works and I will meet up with Gary at some point before the end of the week. And see if it aligns with what his plans are and, and the Great Hill bylaws. And maybe we could put something in place so that we, that we don't have this situation. And I'm not saying we don't need to amend. What we do going forward. We, we probably should. There probably should be some rewording of it. Doug is absolutely right. It says suspension in there. And so we, when, when you use the word suspension, there's, there's usually some. Some reinstatement that goes with that. So maybe that needs to be added to the policy, but I don't think the policy overall needs to be booted. I just think we need to know what that path is going forward. I think I've got a, a reasonable solution for that.
Commissioners, anybody have any other thoughts?
Wait, may I speak for a sec? So Chris Edwards. Um, I'm not gonna go down the same path everyone has, you know, um, I, I, I agree with everything Kathy Hanan just said. I've been in this department ten years. I raised two kids so far. And every year in ten years, I've, I've made my calls. I've had child care issues, everything, all right? I, I'm, I'm, believe me, I am sympathetic to that. We've had this policy. This policy was rewritten in, I believe, two thousand fourteen. And, um, you know, they could say what they want, but we have never upheld this policy and it's time that we upheld it. May, maybe this is what we needed to go out to say, all right, well, you know what? They're not fooling around because every year. We get more and more people on this list. We started with, Mike could tell me the number. I, I don't remember the number, but it was well over twenty five. Thirty two, okay. So we, we mentioned it at meetings. All the officers that were there knew about this. The officers at Citizens relayed this to the members down there. And the people that were falling behind, they, they saw the numbers, they knew they were falling behind. We did five hundred and ninety five calls. These people knew that they did not have thirty calls, okay? It is January tenth. And we're at call nineteen already. We are getting nothing but busier. We are up sixty something calls from last year. And then we're up forty calls from there. So we're getting nothing but busier. I don't want to throw anybody out. But something needs to be done to say, this is our policy, this is what we're doing, this needs to be followed. Now, do I agree there should be a plan to come in? Yes. Do I agree with the commissioner saying you need to come up with a plan? No. Is there a problem? Yes. So why don't we be men, sit down and come up with a solution? Why does it gotta be put on the four chiefs who are doing everything as, as it is now? We don't have a secretary that, you know, the chief did, did the past boards had. So we sit there on our weekends doing run reports. We're doing this, we're doing that, we're, we're making sure the gear's all set. This board of chiefs is doing everything. We don't have a secretary, as I said, we don't have that, we don't have any of that. So if there's a policy you guys want to be in place, you're in charge of this department as well. Let's make a workshop. Let's come up with something. But the finger pointing's gotta stop. It, it's gotta stop. And everyone joins this department, whether you put twenty years in, ten years, five years and you'd call to make a, a, you, you join to make a commitment. If you can't uphold that commitment, you know you can't uphold that commitment. It's time for you to make a change. Plain and simple. That's all I got, Clay.
All right. Any commissioners have any thoughts before I speak?
Uh, no, I believe that, just real quick, but I think we're all on the same page of. We just need to come up with a way to bring people back. Like the policies. If we, if like you guys were saying, would probably been like done before, we had ran into this and ironed it out already. So I believe this is a step in the right direction. We just gotta come up with a way to bring people back.
Matt?
Well. So I, I'm trying to listen. Sorry, I've been on my way home from work and I just walked into my house. I've been listening to everything. I've also been at every meeting. You know, we've been talking about these letters for three or four months. What I don't understand is why the officers haven't spoken up before this point. Um, I know that there's been communications with the citizens officers because I've been a part of those conversations. I've been there with Mike. I'm not, I, I haven't talked to any Great Hill officers. Why these members are being, uh. Sorry. These members are now coming out and saying, oh, well, I was on leave, I had this, I had that. But Mike's been talking about this since October. Chris has been talking about it. Quinn has been talking about it. Dave's been talking about it. Why it's not brought up before the letters even went out is beyond me. I've been a part of. Disciplining guys, removing guys, making deals with guys. Uh, most of my deals never worked. I do agree that we do have to figure out, like Chris said, together. A way for people to come off this suspension. But, uh. Just like Chris said, putting the blame game needs to stop. Uh, everyone's aware of this policy. I, I was one of them. I was close to not making it. It's the same people all the time. That do it, right? You know, once in a while, somebody new's on the list. Something happens, but when it's the same people every year, at some point, we have to have an end of this game. And I think that's what the chiefs are trying to get at, is the same people every year are on this list and we're gonna make a deal. And they're gonna be on the list again. So. Life happens, you know, I'm another one. I have kids. I, I took on two kids out of nowhere. So, and, and I was captain and still making calls. Um, I don't like that excuse. I understand people's lives are different, but it also needs to be. Spoken about. If, if, if somebody, if an officer knew that people weren't gonna be around, then the officer should have spoke up in October when we were talking about this. That's all I got.
Mike, you got anything? Mike Julian, excuse me.
Yeah, just, uh, again, uh. I mean, we've beat it to death pretty much, but, but the key to the whole matter is communication. I think it has to be. Communication has to be with the officers to the members. They, they need to. When they're posting these lists, when they see guys that are falling off the list, they need to start getting on them and in June and July, not, not in November. And, uh, I think they should be able to see some kind of a pattern. They're, they're entering the numbers, they're seeing the numbers. And they post the list, that, maybe that's not enough. I mean, you gotta, you gotta go out, especially make sure everybody's communicating. If you see somebody missing like, like a Doug who's made a zillion calls. Somebody should have called, said what, what's going on and, and let him explain it. But, um, again, that's, that's, it's communication. It's all communication, communication, and, and I think we could have avoided this whole thing.
All right, I got a couple of. Questions that we have kind of skirted on. I, I, I really feel that this. Is an operations issue and that the commissioners should enforce what the chiefs are saying. But I think the commissioners also have to be. If the, whatever the company officers and the chiefs have worked out with the individuals who got letters. Do not agree or think that it's unfair, they should be coming to the commissioners. To. As another step in solving an issue. I, I agree with just about everything that everybody else has said here. I, I mean, there's a lot of finger pointing. It's a lot of the same people. I don't know, I. I, I, unfortunately, I agree with the letters. I mean. These people are not doing it. This isn't a one time thing or a one year thing. I mean, this is something that. It's the same people on the lists every year. I mean, go through the captains. See what, see what the captains and the officers can come up with as far as something to take and see if these people are willing to take and. Be more productive to the Seymour Fire Department. And. See how that works. If it doesn't, goodbye. Mike?
Uh, you know, I just think that, you know, you do have this policy and every year it does seem like.
And every year it does seem like it's the same people. Uh, I can tell you that I went three to four years back. Uh, and the numbers are pretty consistent. Uh, some of the people that got the letter. They haven't made thirty calls in four years, if you total them all up. You know, so to have the captains basically give them a second chance, why even have the policy? You know, if people are on leave, they need to tell us that they're on leave. You know, and and it's not being communicated. You know, but i- if you're, if you're gonna give people, you know, sixty days to make thirty calls, that's cool. And we've done this before and we've danced around this. And what's gonna happen is they're gonna make thirty calls. You're not gonna see them for the rest of the year. You're gonna start a new year off and you're gonna be back in the same boat. So again, I think that the commissioners need to take it to a vote. You know, because if you're gonna keep giving people all these different chances, I'm not, I'm not talking about the firefighters that are on leave. Or the ones that we didn't know about that were on leave, but the firefighters that consistently have not made thirty calls in numerous years. You know, how long do you let that go on for?
It sets a little bit of precedent, you know, for some newer members or people that are very active with the department. They say, okay, well, you know, the chiefs and commissioners let this slide for all, every year. I'm not gonna put in a hundred calls anymore. I'm just gonna stick to my thirty and be done. And then they're viable assets on scene. That we're not gonna start coming around anymore, you know?
Be- being that this is the first year that we are enforcing this policy, I mean, we are gonna have bumps in the road. I don't see any reason, any reason whatsoever to discard this policy. I think that we have to, we have to solve the. Issues that members are bringing to us, but I see no reason that this policy should be taken out of this department. I think.
So I guess my question is this then. I don't, how do I explain? I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Can I, a- and 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 I think the bump in the bumps in the road are something we're gonna accomplish or or have with. Any of the policies we've written. They brought valid points to us that. These, that we need more things in this policy. But I think we should be improving our policies, not just voting to take and throw it away.
No, I'm not saying throw it away, but you can overrule it. And secondly, how do I explain to firefighters that are making well over a hundred calls? That all the firefighters that didn't make thirty calls are still members and they're gonna get a second chance? How is that fair to the other firefighters?
Well, we don't.
Explain that to me just so I can let them know.
I don't, I don't think that it's gonna be, all of the individuals are gonna remain active members of the department. I think we're gonna have people that are, the people that are gonna be going to the captains and saying, hey, look, or I wanna come back. Those are the people we should be interested in trying to get back. And if there's other people that are just gonna say, well, no. We don't need them.
Yeah, this policy just needs a, like you saying, we gotta refine it. It needs a. A way for someone to come back if they wanna come back. And that's why we're saying, um, Gary and John could talk it over, come up with a policy, discuss it with us, and then we can, you know. Move that iteration going forward.
But not with us. It's not gonna be discussing with us. It's gonna be a policy. Well, I mean, it can be a workshop between the chiefs and the commissioners to. Add or refine a little bit, but it's still a, an admin policy, so.
Right. What I'm saying is, like, so the thirty calls is a Seymour Fire Department policy. How we, how we have someone come back has gotta be part of that policy. That's why I'm saying it's part of the Seymour Fire Department. So we should be in on it.
Okay.
Clay, I I beg to differ. It's Chris Edwards. You guys approve all our policies. All our SOTs have to be approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Correct.
So it's not, i- i- yes, it's an operational issue, but it's, it's not an operational issue. As far as the policy. Because you guys approved it.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, what I'm saying is, how we bring the people back, like if they wanna come back?
No, 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 Pat, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But but Clay, if less I misunderstood Clay, Clay said that, you know, it doesn't have to go to the board. It's gotta go to the chiefs. Yes, it goes to the chiefs. You know, the chief looks it over, it gets the vote, obviously. But it doesn't go in effect until it gets approved by the commissioners.
Correct. I understand. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, let's look at it as. Let's say discipline. Discipline would go to a company officer. If you weren't happy, it would happen with discipline. You would go to a chief. And if you go there to the chiefs and you appeal to the chiefs and the chiefs didn't agree with you, you have the ability to go to the commissioners. There has to be that separation or a steps to go through. I'm not saying eliminate us. It's not how we approved it. I just think that the commissioners should be. If the individuals who are not making the calls don't feel that. What what they have to do to come back. And they're gonna discuss that with the chiefs. They should have the ability to come to the commissioners. The commissioner shouldn't be part of this discussion now. In what they are doing to come back. We should be. Separate from that so that they could talk to us.
Okay, that makes sense. I got you. I'm on the same page now.
Okay, that, you you know what, I'm just saying. If if all of us are sitting down there and he comes back and it's. Company officers, the chiefs and the commissioners are all sitting there. He's got one shot and he's done. And any other discipline or any other kind of disagreement or anything like that. There's steps and levels to go through to find a solution. I think the commissioners have to be separate from this in the beginning. That's just my opinion.
So I just wanna make something very clear. I just, so we're gonna give firefighters that haven't made thirty calls in almost four years a second opportunity. That's what we're doing, yes?
That's up to the captains.
Well, the only thing, the only thing it is prefaces is they're all in the same boat. So like. Doug, he's been a big part of this firehouse for quite some time. Last couple of years, not so much, but. You, we expect him to return to some point to where he was. I understand what you're saying, like someone who hasn't been there four years has probably put in a total of ten calls, still got gear in it. Those are the people you wanna get out, because they're, they're no, they're not helping us. I understand that. They're all part of the same pool, though. That's the thing.
If if I gave you the numbers, that, you know, not the firefighters that are on leave, but if I gave you the numbers. For four years, we've had people that haven't made thirty calls. And now we're saying, well, we're gonna sit down with them. We're gonna get, we're gonna come up with something. Okay, how is that fair to a, and I can say, like Ethan Iott, who's who's on this, who made two hundred and sixty-four calls last year? Or someone who made over a hundred calls last year.
I, I'm gonna.
I just don't think it's right.
But I I got you, but you gotta realize, all part of the same.
You're gonna, you're gonna have firefighters. You're gonna have firefighters. They're smart, okay? So they're gonna say, well, we only gotta make thirty calls. And if we don't, well, then we just gotta meet with the captain. He's gonna give us a pass. So if that's how you wanna run it, then so be it.
Mike, that's, that's what we're saying. Like, the net, the part that was missing from this policy. Was a way to bring those people back that want to be part of the firehouse.
That's all. But you have people that have not made thirty calls in four years.
Right, and they'll probably be gone.
Why would you think they deserve a second chance?
I'm not saying they really.
Because they're getting away from the fact that there's a current policy. There's a current policy that we're walking away from. Uh, like we're ignoring the part of the policy that we're trying to enforce here.
What what I'm saying is, you, listen, they're all part of that same pool. Now, are you saying we should just get rid of all those people?
I'm saying that if someone's on leave that we didn't know about, then obviously that's a different story. But we have firefighters on this list that have not made thirty calls in three years.
I I got you.
By giving them a second chance. I mean, what is that for the rest of the department?
Yeah, I I got what you're saying. And it's been my experience. Those people like you're talking about will blow this chance again. But there's other people in that, there's other people in that pool that.
Matt Calzone. Matt Calzone, Commissioner Calzone.
I'm here.
When you were captain, how many, how many times did we had sit people down and say, you didn't make thirty calls and gave them a second opportunity? How many of those members are still in the department?
Uh, none of them. Thank you. I I've, every, every deal I made my three years as captain. At some point, most of them have resigned or put letters in or changed their status, but they do change. Um, you know, people like who are on leave, like Doug just told us, we're up, he was on family leave. None of us knew about that. The chiefs didn't know about that. We're understandable. We're gonna work with that. You know, he's gonna meet with Gary and they're gonna work with that. They're working on the lead. What Mike's talking about are these members. That have no excuse. They are not on leave. They are not medical. They just don't show up and they're gonna continue to not show up. And we do need to have an end game that removes these people. Not everyone has an excuse and we need to have this end game. So if they're on leave and they, you know, Doug told, you know, Doug told Gary or. Or we just found out, like, okay, Gary and Doug are gonna work on it. You know, Captain Hanon is gonna, has got meetings with guys, but some of these guys are on this list every year. And do not show up. They don't do anything for the department. So at some point, we do have to cut this dead weight.
Agree a thousand percent. All I'm saying is, those people are in the same pool of people that we have that we know will come back. And so we just gotta give the people we know that wanna come back a way to come back and let the other people just go. That's all. We just gotta come up with that policy. This will be the finish of that policy.
But most, but most of the people who want to come back are the people who were on leave that we didn't know. It's from, from what I've heard. The majority of the names that want to come back. Had an issue that the chiefs weren't aware about or or the cow officers weren't aware about. And then there's the people who had no issues, who haven't communicated to anybody, who should not be getting a second chance. The people that do, that that had issues, had had family care issues, health issues, medical issues. They need to make that aware. You have to communicate with your company officers. If nobody hears from you, nobody knows what's going on. But now we're gonna say, oh, guess what? You know, we didn't hear from you all year. You're you're being removed. Now you want a second chance. Now now they're gonna say, oh, well, you know, I had this going on. At what point were you gonna communicate that? Because this was being communicated for months. And everyone is friends with everyone downtown or for for downtown at least. The members who are on our list knew that this was coming. And none of them can tell us that they didn't.
Not only that, but a lot of, but not to cut you off, Matt, but a lot of, a lot of the members too that were behind. Like we had said earlier in this conversation, had made the attempt to get their thirty back. You know, and some of them did a good job in doing so. And they got themselves caught up and they put the effort in and they jumped, you know, both sides of the town to get the job done and. We're not having a conversation about them. You know, so the people to, so Pat, to your point, the people that wanna be here did their part. You know, I mean, they put that extra effort in, that last ditch effort at the end of the year. There are several people that were very close. And I think that some of them, you know, those are the conversations, the ones that are very close. That are, you know, onesie and twosies behind. Okay, give them a little, give them a little shot to get them back on track. Maybe, you know, they, at the end of the year, they had a last ditch effort to try to get thirty. Let's do it. But the people that are 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 sitting way far behind, not making any efforts. Enough is enough and we have to snap a line. We are leaders of this department. We need to start holding everybody accountable. Period.
Free a thousand percent. I'm just telling you, all those people, though, that, there are some people we wanna bring, that we want to, that we will want to come back, because they've done stuff in the past.
Absolutely. We wanna be able to give them. Though, and I think that the remorse will be there with the conversations that they have with their captains. Absolutely. That's why we're giving these people a chance. But I think at the end of this conversation, we all can agree that we need to brush up on a cuff, we need to brush up on a couple of things with our policy, number one. We need to give, we need to give members a way to get back on track, whether it be okay, you can reinstate yourself or try to come back after a year or six months or. You have to put in X amount of drills or whatever the case may be. We'll, we'll figure that out. That is something easy to get done. The fact, but across the board, we need to just be consistent. Going forward, I think the chiefs are very, are 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 standing together on that. I I I think the chiefs are standing together on this topic where. We agree that we have been very lackadaisical on our policies in general. They have been there. They have been standing there for years and years and years. Now, because we wanna crack the whip, it's, oh, it's foreign and 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 and, oh my God, I can't believe they're doing this type of thing. Well, it's there in black and white, guys, across the board. We just. We're finally calling it quits and we're stopping with the nonsense. And we have thousands of dollars worth of equipment out there that people are not using. That other candidates can come in and use, that are, that are, that wanna be here and wanna put the time and wanna serve the department, the community. So. I think that, uh, just across the board, both chiefs and commissioners, we just need to workshop whatever we gotta do to get the policy corrected. Captains, you work with, uh, with your, uh, with your offenders that are not meeting their thirty, come up with a plan to the next chief's meeting. And then we move forward. There's no need to beat this up anymore. I'm I'm sorry, but my tooth is starting to really grind.
I agree. Any other discussion on this? Then we can move on. Anybody else? Alright. Any other unfinished, uh, business? Hearing none. Um, new business. We need to add to our agenda. Election of officers for this year. I need a motion to do that.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we need nominations for chairman.
Sorry, nominate people.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Vice chairman.
I'll nominate Clay.
Anybody else? And financials is the last one.
Nominate Mike Julian.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Um, how do we do this? The secretary cast one ballot for everybody?
Please, please, come here, come here, boy.
Sorry, puppy, puppy problems.
Well, yeah, I believe, I believe the secretary can just cast one ballot. Everyone's unopposed.
Alright, Angela.
Yes, I cast one ballot, vote for everyone unopposed.
Okay, thank you. That's taken care of. Uh, any other new business? Chiefs requisitions. Mike, can you go over them? Cause I I didn't get them.
There's two chief's recs, uh, one for myself for Winchell Wipers, and one for three juniors to go to the fire academy for junior core weekend.
I did email them out after.
Okay.
Yes, I I did get the man, so thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
All in favor of chiefs requisitions? We need a motion in a second.
Motion to accept.
Second.
No other discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Commissioners comments. Mike Julian.
Uh, no more, no additional comments. Uh, thanks, everyone, for coming.
Pat?
No additional comments.
Matt?
No additional.
And I have nothing. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We need a second, guys.
A second?
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion passes, good night.
Hi, everybody. Good night.